Okay. Make sure this is not, you got, all right, Jason got that. Okay. Um, so yes, the time is seven o'clock. And I will call the Perry Township Meeting for January to order. Except that I'm having trouble getting my Zoom to open back up again. Here we go. All right. Would everyone please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Bankin, are you with us?
I am.
Okay, hi. Hi, could you call roll, please?
Mears? Yes. Lynn?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Hey. At our planning meeting, we passed a resolution to clarify our meetings and our work sessions for 2021. We did not, in the resolution, state the words "as needed." So we need a Resolution 2101-A to amend that pre-existing resolution to state that meetings would be as needed. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend the previous wording stating that our work sessions will be on an as-needed basis?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Perry Township Board of Trustees meeting's work sessions for the first Tuesday and fourth Tuesday of the month as needed at 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM. I probably should have said that way.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Okay, and then Resolutions 2107 and 2108. We need to approve minutes from the year-end meeting and the reorganization meeting. Do both of you have an opportunity to look over those minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve both minutes as they stand?
We have a resolution for the payment of bills as well. That's in the 2021-07 through
We want to do that together? Okay. Those need to go separate. Normally, we do all three together?
We have.
All right, then, we'll just make a motion for 2021-07 through '09 to approve the minutes and the payment of bills.
I make that a motion to Resolution 2021-07 through '09, approve minutes and payments and bills.
I'll second it.
Mears?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to separately approve the minutes from the special meeting that was held on January 4th of 2021. That's Resolution 2110. And I'll go ahead and make that motion to accept those minutes from the special meeting on January 4th. Oh, wait.
You were not present.
Yep, yep.
Why I put them separately?
Right, I just realized that's the one I wasn't at.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes from the special meeting on January 4th.
I second.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Lynn?
I abstain.
Fiscal Officer reports, revenue appropriations, blankets, and POs are open for 2021. I've amended the certificate of estimated resources to the Montgomery County Auditors, updated the contact list with the Montgomery County Engineers Office, and Kramer and Associates are reviewing the sheep road for the in-kind contributions. Hopefully, we'll have that settled here within the next few weeks. And that's all I have.
Okay. Um, is Mr. Kraft with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hi, Mike.
Hello.
You have a report for us?
Got the flagpole fixed at Paramount Cemetery. The cable broke, so the gentleman was out today, and we got it fixed so we can use it again. It broke about a week ago, and they finally were able to get out. We've had two funerals this year so far, and we got two more for the week to go. So we're off and running there. We're getting ready for maybe Snow Friday, so we're ready for that. And we did cut two big trees down on Hecathorne Road and another one, three actually. But we gotta wait on the fourth one until we get fully staffed back.
Okay.
And that's about all I have. And then if we have to talk about, for some reason, my phone dropped. So if we gotta pass a resolution for the mowing contract and put it in the paper for the Brookville Star.
Right, that's on here to come to. Resolution 2021-07 through 11 to approve the cemetery mowing bid notice to be put into the Brookville Star.
I did have one question on that. Should we put the locations of the four cemeteries in there? By just naming them by name, it's I don't know, might be difficult to give a bid if they don't physically know where they are, if they're in an adjacent area.
If they're able to, they can contact us. I don't know how much more it costs to put that ad in if we name all the cemeteries and locations, or they can call us either, or whatever the trustees want to do.
Yeah, I think they charge by the word.
Right. Okay.
Mike, when we did this before, on our last one, do you have any of the other people that bid? That, on the last time that we did this?
I believe two, two people bid last time. One was Leet, and one was Jeff Millhouse.
Okay, so we only had two bid last time, right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if that person would be interested, or, okay.
I'm not for sure.
Okay. I make a motion, Resolution 2021-07, to approve cemetery mowing bid news for the Brookville Star.
I'll second.
Mears?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
I mean, if I can speak up about that. The bids have to be sent into the office, the address that's on there, which is the administration office, and needs to be accepted. Karen needs to accept those. They cannot be accepted anywhere else, and this is advice from Nathaniel. On another note, once we receive them, we did have some issues one year. That's when we were having meetings here at the township. They were all sealed bids, they were open during the meeting. One came in about $20 less, and the one person thought there was something shady going on. I would suggest with the opening of these bids for the February meeting, Jason, you want to be here at the township building and with Zoom. And since Karen's name is on there, she'll need to be present as well. And then you can open them up in front of the camera, unless you guys feel like there's no need for that.
I don't have a problem with that.
We could certainly do it at a work session, or we can call a special meeting for it, either one, based on the nature of it being financial.
We just have to do the approval in a meeting.
Yeah.
So.
And you might want to open it up for the bidders to be present at, here at the administration building as well, just so there's no issues. Some suggestions from past experiences and some issues that we had, just trying to overlook those and what we could do for this bid opening, so there's no concerns about something was wrong.
Right, all of our meetings are open, so I don't see a problem with that. Yeah, I think that's good advice, and I think we could do that. So we'll just work it out, whether we're gonna do it in the working, we could do it in the working session, and then have the meeting after to actually decide it next month. I think that'd be fine, it would fit that schedule.
I don't know if you can open the bids in a working session, I would have to find that out.
I would say you have to do it in a meeting, Jason.
Okay.
Yep.
I can do it during a meeting. I'm fine with that. I'll be up there in the big room by myself.
Well, Karen will have to be with you, because she's accepting the bid. So you and Karen will be in the meeting room. Any of the bidders can be present as well, everybody else can be on Zoom.
And we don't make the dollar figure per bid public, do we?
No.
That's what a sealed bid is, okay. Just making sure.
Well, Jason, is that something that you would want all of us to attend, the trustees, so we can all yeah?
Yeah, we can. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Just have everybody else on Zoom.
Yeah, that'd be fine. So the next, okay.
Well, one suggestion, though, before we decide on a bidder, we need to see what prices come in, whether, you know, if they come in high, it's gonna be, we're going back to mowing. So we have to see where the bids come in at. I mean, we've had some bids fairly high, so we'll have to sit down and see where they're at and go from there.
Well, what I, what I would suggest is, is that, Mike, you, you run the numbers for what it would cost for the township to do it, and we have that in hand as we're going through the bids.
Yeah.
Right.
That way
I've been sitting down and figuring, but I gotta figure on if we get, if we go back to mowing ourselves, we will have to buy another mower. So I've got a price on that. So we'll figure that all in on the cost and everything on that then.
Yeah.
The cost, manpower, the insurance, all of that factors into that.
Right.
Right. So it'd be fuel, the whole nine yards.
Yep, if we could have that, that pricing estimate from you, Mike, by the first, I think that'd help.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Other than that, we'll work on trees as we can, or the trees we can take down with personnel we've got now. And then, like I said, one tree up on Hecathorne, we'll have to wait for a full crew to take down because of the safety aspect of it. So we are working on them. But the two giant ash trees on Hecathorne are down, and we are gonna take the one tree there at, way in the cemetery on Air Hill, the one they trimmed the top out of, we will take that one down.
Good, that will make somebody on Air Hill very happy. Mike, have you filled the position that Dale Mears has vacated?
No, we're gonna go through winter with just what we've got. Dave has stepped up and more or less took my role, so winter time is covered, so we're gonna wait till spring and see where we stand on the mowing and everything else. I think that should be it.
Okay. Then Chief Littleton, your report?
Okay. Tiffany Westfall resigned as of February, January the 8th, I'm sorry, as Friday, January the 8th, 2021, so I need a resolution accepting her resignation.
I move that we accept Tiffany Westfall's resignation as of January 8th, 2021.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
I'm gonna say Lynn, I'm not for sure.
Yeah.
Mears?
Yes.
We have three candidates in the hiring process for the administrative assistant slash evidence custodian. We have two officers in the hiring process for part-time, working on some of the statistics for 2020. Perry Township responded to 2,219 calls for service last year. We're still working on breaking that number down into the, the subcategories and everything. But for example, 643 out of that 2,219 calls were traffic stops, and out of the 643 individuals that were stopped, 150 received some sort of traffic citation. That's also gonna be broken down into, especially for traffic citations, you know, what roads that these citations were issued on. So all that's gonna be coming more towards the end of the month, up on our website and everything. Easter Icon is our next community event. Planning that we're able to move forward because of COVID. We are early, or we are in the early planning stages for, as of right now with that. I'd like the trustees, I'd like to ask the trustees if we can go into an executive session for ORC 121.22G1, a compensation of a public employee.
Does that need to be tonight?
I'd like to talk about this some point in time.
Jason, are you set up to split us off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Chief, can you talk one more time?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure I had you.
Okay.
Okay, well, at this time, in accordance with the Ohio revise code, I make a motion that we move to executive session to discuss a compensation concern with Chief Littleton.
Seconded.
Okay, at this time, everybody stand by.
We're gonna take roll.
What's that?
We didn't take roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. I cut you off, Ron. Ms. Bankin, can you?
Can you hear me now, Lynn?
Oh, yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session. Everybody will be put into the waiting room, and we will let you back in as soon as we've completed. Thank you. Two, three. Okay, so we have the three trustees, Ms. Bankin and Chief Littleton. Hold one second, I need to pause the recording. All right, everybody's back in?
Everybody back in? Okay, thank you, everybody. At this time, I'll make a motion that we return from executive session and resume our regular meeting.
Seconded.
Lynn?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
And if I can throw in here, at the year-end meeting, we did approve Tiffany Westfall's resignation. The motion was made by Mears, seconded by Hartshorn. Kind of got tied into everything with her pay increase, and then it rolled into her leaving. So the, we'll just have a double resolution there.
Okay. So noted. Okay, anything else, Chief Littleton, or?
Yes, I just have just a couple more things. One, I'd like to ask the trustees and even Mike from the road crew, if there's something that we could do to update our speed limit signs. And what I mean by update, there's ones like out on Air Hill that are so rusted over, you could hardly see the speed limit that's posted on the sign. If we can get those signs replaced and updated with just a newer sign, so they're more vigilant for the motorists that are driving through the area. And I don't know who we need to speak with for the county roads in order to see if they can make that request happen as well. The other issue, slight issue with that, I've noticed that some of our speed limit signs are spaced extremely far apart and only facing a one-way. So if those can be, you know, fixed and, you know, placed a little bit more than, you know, one every block of the intersection or, or something, and they're facing both directions, to help, you know, inform motorists to what the speed limits are and everything. I think that'll help cut down on some of the, on some of the confusion, at least as far as excuses that we see on our side when we stop people for speed. Secondly, I've been mentioning that the little black box out here for the trash bills, where people can pull up and deposit their, their trash payments. And there, we're having issues with people pulling up and facing the wrong direction, and it's right there at that intersection. I don't know how many times that I have sat here and watched cars almost go head-on with people pulled up there, parked the wrong direction. I've come around the corner, and then all of a sudden, the individual goes to change from the wrong side of the road to the correct side of the road. Now we're doing this little dance, you know, which car is going which way to avoid an accident. I'd really like for, if at all possible, as far as a, a safety concern, if that box can be relocated. I really don't want to give anybody citations for, you know, going left to center and parked on the wrong side of the road for paying the trash bill. But at the same time, we all have to be safe, and facing the wrong direction right there at that intersection, that's very dangerous.
Mr. Kraft, how difficult would it be to move that box into our parking lot?
It wouldn't be hard. It's cement, and we can pull it. Problem is, you're probably gonna have to put it on the west side of the parking lot, and you will lose them parking spots. Because if people pull in with their trash bills, they'll need at least three to four to get pulled back around. Because you don't have to back up in the traffic, they can pull back around in the parking lot. But it could be done.
Maybe just like, take the one at the, the back row, the very first one, and just put it there?
We can, but if they pull in, like they're gonna put it in the box without getting out, and they pull in driver's side, then you're gonna need three to four spots, just so they don't have to back, back out on the road to get out, they can pull around in the parking lot and leave. I mean, in sa, if you're talking safety, that's about what's gonna have to be there. Or you're gonna take it in the front row, right there between the building and, and the road, and put it there close to sidewalk, and you're gonna lose them parking spots, so wherever you want to put.
I have a question. Do the cameras face that back road? Or row of, where we park? Do the cameras reach that far? Okay.
Yes.
So if we wanted it on the driver's side, wouldn't, I mean, I know the back of the, the back row of the parking lot there, facing the building, is a little further away, but it would allow for people to come in, pay right there in that corner.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but you'll have to put it back, at least two to three parking spots, so they pull off the road, so they can do that safely and drop it, and then instead of backing back up and backing on the road, you'll have, have them leave enough room so they can pull out in the parking lot and turn around and head out.
Right.
Or we may have to make it so they have to leave their cars, stick it in the box, back in the car. Put it, you know, up at the foot of the steps or something that lead into the building, or
Or at the corner of the sidewalk and the curb there.
So we could put it right there at, like Miss said, there, maybe right at sidewalk on the south side of the sidewalk at the curb. If there's nobody parked there, they can pull around, but if there's somebody parked there, they just have to pull up and walk it in, or walk it to the box.
It's better than getting it on.
Yeah, and especially yeah, especially where they're getting icy, you want to try to let people do it from their cars if possible. So, you know, it's
Could we hang it on the building, Mike?
It could be hung on the building. We have to make some brackets, but it could be hung on the building. We'll have to make a sign that's visible right from the front and the side at the trash drop box here.
Yeah. We'll, we'll have to put a notice out anyway, if we, if we do end up moving it, just let everybody know that it's been moved, so, yeah.
We might want to look at when, if we actually make it to the building construction or the add-on, when all that happens, maybe consider like a drive-through, like the bank things have, you know, somewhere to drive by and drop that off, include that in future plans.
Yeah, definitely be something to consider.
Well, right now, where do you want to move that?
Anywhere that it's not?
I would, I would say the corner there, I would choose the sidewalk and the curb, that's what I would do.
Yeah, that's probably the best spot to put it.
I thought. Next to that handicap spot.
Well, you want it south or north of the sidewalk?
South. Are you saying, what, what do you think, Mike, better closer to the building or the south side?
Well, if you're for visibility, so they can at least see a box out there, it'd be south, but it could be moved either or. It could be moved to the north side, and just, we have to put a sign on there, on the building, that's fine.
I'd park it as close to, or put it as close to the light, whatever light is there as possible for safety reasons, if nothing else.
Well, I think the light there on the west side of the building, they light up pretty good, that parking lot, so it'd be all right, 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 we're on the north side of, of the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the building.
Yeah, in that flower bed, like
It's
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like a good spot. That work for you, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, also, Chief Littleton, in regards to your stop sign or your traffic speed signs, I have some information that I will give to you if we cross paths tomorrow, or I'll try to leave it for you from Ohio LTAP, the local technical assistance program, for their township safety sign grant program, and how to get free signs from ODOT.
Okay.
Well, for most part, any county road, they'll have to do that.
On the county road, right, on our township roads, we can do it.
Township, we can do it, which we just put a couple new sto, or speed limit signs on Air Hill between Keener and Johnsville, so them are new. But what part of Air Hill were you talking about on them signs?
That, that was the main part, Mike, and I haven't been through there in a couple of days. So if that was done, then I do apologize, I haven't noticed it, because I haven't been down that way in the last couple of days.
Put some new speed limit signs up about two, three weeks ago.
Okay. So I'll, I'll continue to drive around, and once I see those, I'll just make note, and, Mike, I'll get with you, and we can get that, get that addressed and, and everything.
Good enough.
And that's all that I have, thank you.
Then we'll move on to zoning.
Okay, for the trash, there was 1,297 trash bills that were mailed out on 12/28/2020. And in zoning, the permit issued was one pole barn and two portable storage units. Currently, I have one application from a resident who wants to build a detached garage with a two-bedroom apartment in it. So we'll be working on that and going before the BZA with that. I need a resolution for the land glide application that I had mentioned at the, I think it was the year-end meeting or the reorganization meeting. We didn't do a resolution to either grant that or if you don't want it. uh, do a resolution to either grant that or if you don't, uh, want it, then just let me know.
Remind me which one that was?
It's the app that will, I can have on my phone when I'm out zoning that if I'm having trouble figuring out whose property or where, this app is really good and it will cut down on some time for me to research to figure out whose property it is.
Is that a free app or was there an annual fee?
No, there was a fee. It's, uh, $10 a month. And as a matter of fact, um, Randy, uh, has this app and he's the one that showed it to me. It's really, really helpful.
What was it, Karen? How much a month? Ten?
$10 a month.
Okay. And did, did you check and see if, if you get that, can you install it on your computer at work and your phone?
No, I haven't investigated it at all because I figured I wouldn't waste time until, you know, if you guys approved it or not.
Okay. I think it's a great idea for her to have because I've been out with her before in some places, you know, where we just have a trailer parked and there's no address or anything. She just looks it up and, and the address and everything else comes up. So I know it's a good app.
Are the, the free ones that were mentioned less?
I haven't investigated.
Or.
Oh, I haven't investigated those, Jason, but I can.
I'm just curious, since it was brought up, just do our due diligence to see if, because sometimes free apps, you get what you pay for. So just looking at them and saying, hey, this is why this, that doesn't work. This is why I need the one that's $10 a month. I think we go a long way.
Okay.
Uh, if it's the one that Randy uses, I'm all in favor of consistency also. There's, there's some, you know, networking there between the two departments that I would be in favor of.
Right.
Karen, how do you feel about investigating that and bringing it back to the next meeting? Can you wait that long or?
Yes, I can, I can do that. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing on the list is, um, that I need a resolution for the BCA meetings to be held on the first Thursdays of each month as needed and the zoning commission board meetings, uh, to be held the third Thursday of the month as needed.
All right. I'll make a motion that we have the Perry Township Board of Zoning Appeals Meetings held on the first Thursday of each month as needed and the zoning commission board to meet the third Thursday of the month as needed.
I second.
Are these at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
When?
The other thing that I have is I would like to also use the third Thursdays of the month for for back, better term, or lack of a better term, the zone meeting that I've been talking about where we meet with the zoning commission board, the zoning appeal board and the trustees to discuss and update the zoning text, the interpretation of the zoning text and the zoning issues that are coming before in my office. Um, and these will also be as needed.
And what time would you like those to be?
Um, uh, probably seven o'clock in the evening. That seems to be the best for everybody.
What was the date?
This would be the third Thursdays of the month.
Okay.
Obviously, when, uh, I would schedule these when, uh, if the, um, Board of Commissions was not meeting that night, then we would, we could schedule that meeting that night. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And these again would be as needed.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. All, everybody get together because I know, I know that you've had some issues come up and there's nothing in our zoning. So I think that's time that we all need to sit down and update some things.
Or so much of the language is antiquated.
Right.
Right. I think it'd be very beneficial for everybody. And the last thing I have is I, uh, did get in contact with some townships and some, uh, surrounding cities to do, I was requested a list of their zoning fees just to do a comparison of our fees and charges. And I've been getting that information in. That's, that's all I have.
Okay.
So do we need a resolution then for the zoning meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll at least have to make a motion to have the meetings.
Okay. Like to make a motion on holding a zoning meeting as required on the third Thursday of the month with the zoning commission, zoning appeal board and the trustees.
I'll second. Hartshorn?
Yes.
When?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Okay. And moving into the trustees' reports, um, I have a couple of things that I had hoped to share. Um, I know on the agenda it says that we were going to meet with Beckett and Veronese and after speaking with Travis, um, Travis Beckett, we are going to try to put that off to our next work session. Um, the one that we're having at the end of the month, if that's okay with you guys. Um, getting things together, working with Travis, um, he and Barbara just couldn't get it together with us right now. And so it would just be easier to do it than try to pull it together and have it just kind of so-so. Um, first thing is I want to acknowledge the loss of David Saylor. If anyone doesn't know, he served a very, um, poignant position on our Board of Zoning. And, uh, his loss is felt deeply through all of us. Um, per the governor, we're going to continue Zoom meetings through July 1st or at least until July 1st of 2021. That may be extended, but right now per governor's orders, those are the dates for the amended open meetings act. Um, a couple COVID updates. Um, I've been asked if the township can require COVID vaccinations and if we will be mandating a COVID-19 policy. The short answer is yes, as a township, we can require them, but no, we will not. I'm going to leave it to individuals. I think we as a board are going to leave it to individuals to decide what you do best for you. We're not going to implement those policies. Uh, that being said, um, our township having less than 50 employees does not qualify for FMLA. However, we do qualify for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is FFCRA, granting similar leave to FMLA for up to 12 weeks for coronavirus only or if somebody's kid is sick or off school. So we will be, um, implementing that. Rhonda, I can talk to you about that if we need to. Um, that'll go until December 31st, according to the governor. Then in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 505.04, the annual inventory was completed by yesterday's date. Thank you to Mike, Tim and Karen and especially Teronda for pulling that all together, making it happen on time. Um, I'm registered for the OTA conference. It's going to be online February 1 through 5th. I'm guessing we all might be by now. Um, I'm going to establish some office hours on Wednesdays and I'm hoping to increase more days, hopefully as early as March. Working on getting into the office as much as I possibly can. So if anybody needs a trustee face-to-face, if anybody wants to, um, set up an appointment, I'm happy to meet with anybody, anywhere. Just let me know, time and place, be it Hipsters, McDonald's, our office. I am going to make myself available as needed. Um, and the last thing, just reminding folks, on January 18th, our offices will be closed in observance of the legal holiday of Martin Luther King Day. That's all I've got.
Okay, uh, on to my update. Uh, first, the, uh, ramp project update. Uh, they were able to get in and get the temporary handrails put in quite quickly. They look good. They're sturdy. Uh, and the project's looking good. They've already got the, uh, is that the east side ramp is poured? They're still working on it a bit, but it looks like it's coming along nicely. Uh, I've continued to update the website and township Facebook pages and upload documents as they become available. Uh, I performed an end-of-year cleanup on the website. Basically just archived off the 2020 page to a separate link that's available at the top and rebranded the page for 2021. Uh, and I, I am planning to post the township inventories, uh, once I get a copy of those on the website as well. Um, hyperreach. So didn't get a big turnout on the, uh, straw poll, but we got a resounding yes um, for hyperreach use. And that said, I had a meeting yesterday with Chief Fletcher. Because we've done our due diligence, but it doesn't look like we'd be able to afford the hyperreach capabilities at this time. Uh, and Brookville does have a full, uh, unlimited use contract right now with the Asher Group. Uh, and the fact that they had to include all of Perry Township in their coverage area because they couldn't do just half of the township. Uh, thank God for software limitations. Um, they've offered to let us use those services. So what does this mean? This means that we will have, I will be putting a link on the Facebook page as well as the website for people to self-register. If you have a landline, you're already registered by default. Um, if you have a cell or you want email alerts or anything else, you'll be able to go to this link and you'll be able to register. If you are unable to register or you would prefer, uh, the township registers you for you, there will be a digital form available on the website as well as a digital or as well as a paper form that will be available. And then by the end or by the, over the weekend in the offices for the township to come in and fill out that form. Once the forms are collected, I will do the registration process for anyone who submits one. This will allow us to do numerous, uh, levels of alerts. This includes, you know, weather, bad weather alerts for high winds, uh, road closures, which are big in the township. They often happen and people say, I didn't know that was coming. We can actually send out alerts to let, uh, the surrounding areas know as well as residents know that there's going to be road closures, uh, traffic issues, stormwater, limb pickups, flooding, snow emergencies, boil advisories, canceled events, et cetera. Uh, you're all, we're also able to do this for police issues, any kind of law enforcement event, person of interest, uh, staying clear of a certain area, uh, letting people know in an area that in, in event is happening and notify everyone in that area except where it's physically happening to allow the residents to be safe. So if you have any questions on being able to consume this capability, like I said, there will be a write-up on the Facebook page as well as, uh, links on the website to be able to sign up and register or come into the township and fill out an old-fashioned paper form. Either way, this is, uh, a big need as far as I'm concerned for Perry Township to stay aware and alert. And I want to thank the Brookville Fire Department for allowing us to, uh, consume some of their services to make sure that our residents stay safe. The Miami Valley Resource Planning Commission membership. This has proven to be a little bit more tricky than I had hoped. Um, I contacted the MV RPC and let them know that I, I was looking for reasons why it's a good idea to be a member. Just kept it very simple. And I was basically told the invoice covers that. The invoice in, that they're mentioning is the one that was sent to the township saying this is what you pay and this is about the, what you recoup. The difference is, is that Perry Township doesn't have a lot of the type of things that the MV RPC uh, provides support with. So as I've gone through this, I couldn't find a lot of information as to if it's still a good idea for us to be a member, just to be a member. I don't think it is. Um, I'd like to hear opinions from the other trustees as to what they think about membership in the Miami Valley Resource Planning Commission. Um, I do know the disaster recovery efforts that they've led have helped Montgomery County as a whole. But for a long time out of the gate, they didn't even know that Perry Township had issues. Um, and that said, some residents may have gained, uh, some benefits from that. I don't know. I don't have any numbers on that. But I do know that I don't know of anything that township has received directly from the MV RPC.
Um, just for the sake of records, it's, uh, regional planning committee, commission, our Miami Valley Regional planning, not resource planning.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think we need a membership personally. We don't have our TA buses. We don't have bridges. We don't have highway. Well, no, we personally don't have highways.
Right.
We don't have anything in our jurisdiction that we can't work with the county on. And Mr. Kraft, feel free to jump in if, if you disagree, but I think it's money thrown out there for a membership to get emails about what everybody else is voting on for their areas. I've yet to see any resolutions that they've passed or anything that they've done that's affected our township at all.
And that's how I felt in the meetings.
Well, if I can talk, if you remember, I think it was late eighties, early nineties, you had landfill. And then I think late nineties, you had the possible chance of 892 coming right through the sem- or township. I think, you know, Jerry Peters was very involved in this back then and through his tenure as trustee. And I think it helps with the voice on the board. Plus it makes you aware of any projects or any highways possibly that could come through or any, any other thing. But the two biggest things, you know, I understand you said that we have no highway, but we about could have had 892 come right through the township. Matter of fact, I got a map on the wall here that shows where 892 could have gone through. So that would help, you know, to, I guess, learn about it quicker if something would be coming out this way. Um, you know, we might not receive so much benefit as far as because a lot of countywide, but it does keep you abreast on what possibly could be coming through or not. Uh, but that's, that's the two biggest things that I think years past that, that, that helped with, with Jerry on the board.
So that said, one of the issues that brought this up is that traditionally we've been taking $500 out of the general fund, out of the police fund and out of the roads fund every year for this. Um, because the police budget's so tight and the general fund's so tight, would this be something that we could take the membership money out of the roads funds for, to make sure that we're able to participate and have that ear and be represented?
I did budget the $1,500 out of the general fund. It's appropriated in there. I can't help but think if there's a highway coming through, we're going to know about it from someone other than the MV RPC. I mean, I sat on their board also and, you know, again, County Corps of Engineers, ODOT, there's going to be plenty of talk about it. And now we've got social media and the internet and everything else that's going to have all that information that they didn't have in the eighties and nineties that I, I just don't see the $1,500 getting us anything beneficial that we can't get elsewhere or still find out about.
You know, I guess the best thing to do if you want, before you make a decision, talk to Jerry Peters, see how helpful or not it was. I mean, he's very involved in it. So you can talk to him and see what he thinks too and, but whatever the board wants to do. I mean, he's very involved in it, so you can talk to him and see what he thinks too and but whatever the board wants to do.
Well, and the funny thing is, the only name they know from Perry Township is Jerry Peters. They used his name a couple of times and I said he hasn't been a trustee for a while, so. And we go to the meetings and we've gotten information, but you know, I don't have a problem with reaching out to Jerry and talking with him and finding out what the benefits are from his perspective. But like Mindy said, a lot's changed as to how information is is put out there and everything else. And the need may not be as strong as it once was. So I'll take that action item to get with Jerry Peters. If someone could send me his contact info, I don't think I have it. I'd be happy to reach out and have that conversation with him.
I think meaning the voice for the township means if there would be something that would affect our area. And let's go down like the highway, eight ninety two. If we have someone on that board representing Perry Township stating, we do not want this highway, road, whatever, it could be landfill, whatever else comes down the pike. Miami Valley Regional will listen to us because we are a member. And they will go up to fight for us so we can avoid having that in our township. If we're not a member, then we have no voice in it, our input to a degree.
When's the last time we had any had anything like that?
Eight ninety two was in nineteen ninety eight and the landfill was in ninety. I do not know of anything else.
So we're talking twenty years since we've actually needed to be vocal. And again, I I kind of thinking that if something was coming through the township. I'm not sure the RPC would be the ones that would need to hear our concerns. You know, we're just kind of like we're going, we're working with the Army Corps of Engineers about the wetlands thing. You know, we can bypass the MV RPC and go straight to whomever to express our concerns. And with the advent of email and Zoom and everything else, we now have the ability to reach out farther than we did before. I just felt like I went to so many of their meetings, as did Jason, and nothing they talked about applied to us.
Yeah, I attended last year and I just kind of sat there and it was like nothing was addressed for us, so. I know that they, like Mr. Kraft said, that, you know, they would tell you updates on roads and things like that, but none of them were in our area.
And we're talking one year right now. If we don't pay it this year and we miss it, we can always rejoin next year.
Yes, we can.
We're not banned for life because we decide not to get a membership this year.
Right.
Membership, it's a club. So if we choose to hold that money for something else and not pay for it and we observe what the difference is, then we'll know whether or not to include it in the twenty twenty two budget.
So do we want me to talk to Jerry Peters? Do we want to make a decision now?
I think we should still talk to Jerry Peters. Go ahead, get his input because it never hurts to have all of the information.
Right.
And as it was suggested by Mr. Kraft, there may be something we don't know that he can offer.
Right.
And then we can make a decision after we can say, yes, we've done that.
Right. All right. I will do that and I will bring it back next month's Board of Trustees meeting.
And have we, Rhonda, have, I know you talked about the landfill and stuff. Have we ever used them? I mean, have have they ever ha- have have they ever had to go to bat for us or anything?
I don't know because it has not been during my time. Somebody might want to check with past trustee Sheila Staniford. There was something there that, and I cannot remember, that she attended the, I I thought it was Miami Valley Regional Planning and she got enough support through the board members. But I cannot remember what that is now.
Okay, I'll reach out Sheila too. That's not a problem.
Yeah, because I just just roughly twenty years at, say fifteen hundred, that's over thirty thousand dollars. Just roughly.
All right. The last thing I had was the USDA pre-application. So we submitted the pre-application based on the information we collected. And I received a response back. The current rate for a thirty year term loan is two point one two five zero percent, but is subject to change quarterly. Requires a security to be issued in a general review bond. And the next steps are having a preliminary architectural report and an environmental review completed on the property. And both of those reports usually run about seventy five hundred dollars apiece.
I thought they had grants available.
Not for buildings. They have grants for other things, but for this, it's a thirty year fixed. So something to think about. We can discuss it. I can tee it up for the work session to kind of roll our sleeves up and talk about this. I know we've got a lot of financial stuff going on that we had to figure out, so this may be something that lines up with that. If this is something we want to seriously consider moving forward in the coming months.
Are you gonna do the OTA conference?
Yes.
I think that might be, that's where we got the information the first time on it. We might want to wait until after, see what, you know, ask any questions or see what's presented this year because I'm sure, I I have a copy of the PowerPoint. I'm pretty sure they said that.
That's what they, that's what they said. And every time I've talked with them, they do a bait and switch and say, oh, we don't have grants for that. They have grants for other things like parks and walking paths and stuff like that. But but for buildings, it's, they only do like a thirty year fixed loan. And that said, with the OTA, once the OTA is completed, I will be putting the, all the slides from the OTA on the website like I did last year. So those are all there. In case you didn't know, they're up at the links at the top. And that is all that I have.
Okay. Mine is I res- I had registered for the workshops at the OTA. And again, I have contacted the health department, left another message. I did have a Zoom meeting with Lex Pol regarding information for a policy and handbook for the township. I'll get that information to you guys. We can share it and go over it and I can give you more details when we have a work session. And let's see, I sent an email to York Township regarding their green burial. I had the lady who's in charge, she sent me some information back. And I will be printing that off and getting that to you also. And let's see. The the language, I talked to Ms. Keaton again. I will forward the suggestion to Nathaniel to make sure that he's on board since this is just a suggestion through the Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority and see what Nathaniel says and then we'll go from there. And that's all I have. Oh, Mike, did, have you got the truck on go? I forgot to ask, I'm sorry.
Ah, yeah, we ain't had time to strip it down. We've got some stuff off of it. There's more stuff that needs to come off of it.
Okay.
Hopefully here shortly.
Okay. That's all I got.
Moving on to new business, are you guys available for a special meeting next Wednesday to discuss legal stuff? The twentieth.
I have a few calendars I have to check. I can let you know by tomorrow morning.
Do what?
I have to check some calendars. I'll have to let you know tomorrow morning for a sign.
Okay.
What time are you thinking, Mindy?
Anytime. I'm free all day.
Yeah, the earlier the better for me.
Do it via Zoom. And make sure that Nathaniel's also available.
If it's remote via Zoom, then I don't have any conflicts. I can kind of move my schedule around as long as I don't have to go up to the township.
I figured if we put it a week out, we'd have time to play with dates, times and whatever. So Karen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you then handle coordinating this amongst us? And we'll see if Nathaniel's available for a special meeting on Wednesday, the twentieth at some time.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other new business? Anybody have any old business? I'm just going to request an old business. None of the three of us paid that close attention to the prospering Perry Township Facebook page or to the other Perry Township Facebook page. But I know that there have been comments and concerns on there. And they've had results. Somebody was concerned about some drainage caps and there are drainage caps there now. Someone was concerned about some trees being taken down and the trees are down. So the concerns are being heard. We had a very productive year for the year two thousand, all things considered. If somebody sees something on there or Manfred or Craig, if there's something that should be addressed by the trustees, please reach out to us and let us know what the concern is and that it's there. And that way we can address it because those are not things that we necessarily might see, but those situations have had positive results and I'd like to see that continue for twenty twenty one. Are there any visitors that would like to say anything this evening? Then having no visitors, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the January meeting.
I'll second.
When?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.